February 7th to order and stand for the pledge.
A pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll get Tony seated and we'll call the roll. We're ready to call roll.
Mr. Townsend.
Here.
Mr. Poole.
Here.
Ms. Woodard.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Hollinsworth.
Here.
Ms. Mason. Mr. Gregg.
Here.
Mr. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Boyd.
Here.
Eight members present, one absent, and we do have a quorum.
Okay, is there a motion for approval of the minutes from October 3rd?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are approved for the minutes. Under new business tonight, we have one add-on request for Brown Lake subdivision, the Dollar General site. Is there a motion to add this to the agenda tonight?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we will, you want to add that on to the end, Dave?
Yes, that's why we planned it.
All right, item number one is Robmont Bond. Is there a motion to put that on the floor for discussion? Well, motions are second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we talked a little bit about this last meeting.
Yes.
We'll talk about it more now.
We will. Last meeting, we just wanted to let you be aware that the bond is coming due. The bond for Robmont is coming due. It's out there on Tom Austin Highway, backs up to South Main Street. It is coming due December the 6th, 2019. And so it's been established since 2011, and we would recommend, normally we would recommend requests that you recommend to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, that we call this bond. But common sense tells us if we call this bond, we're going to have three months, four months, that we're not going to be able to do anything. Because the plant's closing, and it's going to be difficult for us to get people out there to do the punch lists, which include 13 items from Public Works and streetlight installations from the electric department. So we believe that it would be best if we recommend that we get a bond again till December the 6th of 2020, but give them to June the 30th of 2020, and if they are not complete by June the 30th, 2020, we will revoke their irrevocable letter of credit. We'll notify them that we're going to do the remainder of the work. Staff will start around the 1st of April, being in contact with them, reminding them that time is drawing near.
Okay, and that's a recommendation from the staff?
Yes, I would much rather them do it than us have to administrate the work.
Okay, I did get a couple of calls from Clay Snead and several texts, and he was opposed to calling the bond right now. He thinks that's a perfect site for the fire station. I don't know for sure what all that has to do with the bond and separate more money involved. But I told him, he couldn't be here, I told him I would put that into the discussion.
How many times has this bond been? It's been renewed every year since, so it started being renewed in 2012. You know, when we were on the back end of the recovery, several years on the back end of the recovery. But like I said, I'm not saying we won't call their irrevocable letter of credit. I just don't want to tie up their money until I can get the work done in a timely fashion. And I won't be able to get the work done. You know, the plant's closing in less than a week, two weeks, and it won't be open again until it's warmed up.
I think it's, well, I think we've done it five times. It's standing the bond. It's highly unusual for us to do that. And I agree with staff that what we needed on June the 1st or June the 30th, whatever day.
30th.
30th, plenty of time. But I think on June the 30th, they need to understand that on that date, if this work has not been done, that it will be revoked and we'll finish the work ourselves.
Yes.
We can't continue to do that. We don't do it for anybody else. We've done it, and of course, he's from out of town, or he's from Clarsville. But I don't want to discourage people from out of town coming here and investing in Springfield. But this has been sitting there since 2011. And it's time to move on and get something done with it. So I'm in agreeance on that date. But he needs to understand that we're not going to have to have a meeting and vote on revoking the bond if we revoke on that day, if it's not taken care of.
That is correct. The resolution will, that I will write or will make very clear that, and the board will go ahead, the resolution will say, "In the event that improvements will not be completed by June 30th, 2020, the Board of Mayor and Alderman hereby authorizes the community development director and the city attorney to execute the irrevocable letter of credit as attached." So they're accepting their, you know, their letter of credit and authorizing the execution of it at the same time if the work is not done. So we won't even come back to you guys. We'll just tell you, we're going to, we do it, or we did it, and we'll move on.
You said the letter will go out in April?
No, the letter will come to us dated December 6th, to, from December 6th of 2019 to December 6th of 2020. And then the work will have to be done by June the 30th, 2020.
David, when do the plants, when will the plants open? And we're talking about asphalt, concrete?
They usually open up towards the end of March.
So he'll have three months.
Mm-hmm. We, three months that we'd sit on, not being able to get the money or do anything with it because we couldn't get the work done. That's the majority of the work. You know, we've got to, you know, they, traffic control and street signs, degress the cracks, seal the asphalt binder, complete the final roadway surface overlay per the plans, install landscape buffers per the plans, drainage ditches need regraded, riprap, culverts cleaned and stabilized per the plans, add topsoil, seen stabilized of the site per the plans, install and maintain erosion control per the plans, clean out and repair all needed temporary sediment, detention pond, outflows, overflow, spillways per the plans, locate and repair all damaged utilities, stubs per the plans, update all erosion prevention and sediment control compliance documents, such as the NOI, NOC, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, and twice leak, weekly inspections, update existing site plans, add catch stations, protection, clean out storm drains, install sidewalks and ADA compliant ramps as indicated per plans. So that's just the public works. The electric department has in there, they've got money in for streetlights and streetlight standards. And then we've got, you know, there's inflation in administrative costs in there. We're not even going to add to that. We think that's the money that we have in would cover it.
That's part of the list. Okay, is there other discussion or questions? All right, would anybody like to make a motion? A question from the crowd there.
Yes, can you come up here?
I'd just like to say that my clients couldn't be here tonight. One of them's out of town, the other one had a meeting in Nashville. So I got elected to come out in the cold. And they asked me to express their appreciation for the lengthy extension of that letter of credit, for the lengthy tolerance of their letter of credit, I guess it is. Talked with them today, and they had said that they would like to have six months to complete it. They've already gotten part of the cost estimates on doing some of this. I have one request of David, some of the city departments, and that is, is that sometime very shortly that we get the department heads that are involved with this to meet with them and spec out what they have to do. That may be, that may be established somewhere in some of the plans. I'm sure that it probably is. I'm sure that I know one of them doesn't know where that is. The other one probably, that will be handling that, probably he either knows or will be readily available to find that out. But anyway, appreciate that. And they, they said that that's what they would like to do anyway, and we just, we hadn't talked any about that beforehand. But I talked to a couple of the folks here earlier, and six months would work for them. They appreciate it.
So if a motion is made for June, everybody's on the same page, and they'll know?
They don't have that exact name. They've only six months, so that'll be fine. Thank you.
June the 3rd would be six months. Well, actually, it'd be seven months. Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion? Make a motion, and we'll go along with staff's suggestions.
My second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. We're ready to vote.
Ms. Woodard.
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Ms. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Pass is eight to zero.
All right, item number two is Eden Point Bond. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion? A second?
I got them.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the bond for Eden Point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eden Point, Zoned RS 10, out off of Black Patch. Last February, February the 5th, we accepted a bond for $230,400. That bond will be coming due in February. We do anticipate a substantial reduction. We understand that they lack just a few items on that first phase. They will be coming here very shortly with the second phases of that subdivision. And so there will be this reduction in bond and a new bond for that second phase. And because they're moving so fast through here, we're going to wait until they get through with their second phase before we ask them to put the final course on. So their first phase bond will be mostly final course and remainder of maybe some stabilization. But they've been moving along pretty well, building some really nice houses out there.
Okay, is there anything we need to take action?
Not at this time. We just wanted to make, you know, we don't want to let these things fall through the cracks. We want to have a discussion with you guys well before they become an issue. And if you have any questions, you know where we're at. We'd be glad to talk to each and every one of you anyway, anytime you want.
Okay. All right, any other questions about this item? Well, we'll move on to item number three. That's rezoning request for 11.88 acres. It's on South Main. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
We got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Dave.
Okay, a little technical difficulty there, okay. The owner of this property, 11.8 acres, is Dr. Johnston. His authorized agent is a gentleman by the name of Clay Jones, who's here this evening. They propose to rezone this property from R20, low density, to RS 10, medium density. Now, the big thing, the big difference in this zoning classification is, is that the lot, minimum lot sizes would go from 20,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. However, in the R20 classification, if they have enough, if they subdivide it and have enough road frontage, which in R20 is 112 and a half feet, they can build duplexes on each every lot that they do that meets that criteria. Where the RS 10 zoning would lock it up to where it would be single-family residential zoning only. So no duplexes, only houses, no multi-residential whatsoever. Same situation, similar zoning, well, it's the same zoning as Eden Point we just talked about. Okay, some points of reference, Watson Road, South Main Street, the YMCA right here. Points of reference. This is what Mr. Jones has proposed. A single cul-de-sac, less than 1,000 feet in length. He has some lots that are right very close to 10,000 square feet. He has other lots that are over 10,000 square feet. He proposes a 13,000 square foot house that has fronts like this, has good interior finishes, at a price point of $200,000 per house. So Mr. Jones feels that that's a good number that he needs to get the project done. Also, an affordable housing cost as well. So the way Mr. Jones has this proposed is 200,000 per house and lot that he sells. Every 10 lots would have a value of $2 million. So this project is in total would have a real estate value increase of $6 million. Did I miss anything? That's Mr. Jones right there. And his engineers and surveyors, if y'all have any questions of them.
All right, is this, and this is the same item that came up about a year ago?
Just over a year ago, but at that time, they requested R15 zoning, but, which is similar to R20, but it's 15,000 square foot lots. But once again, that zoning classification would allow them duplexes, just like the existing zoning classification will. So I discussed R15 with Mr. Jones, and he said that he could not get, he has to have 30 lots to be able to pay for the infrastructure improvements. So that's his magic number, really, per se, to make this project work.
Okay, does anybody got questions for Mr. Jones? Or David, or?
How is this going to impact our sewer system or our system?
Well, at the present time, you know, he's not going to get them done tomorrow. It should be, you know, six months or so that our 5 million gallon stormwater facility there on Cars Creek gets online. And once that's online, there should be adequate capacity. But we have not run that through. We've not filled out, we've not had Mr. Jones fill out a capacity request form because if he doesn't get rezoned, he, there's no need to have water and wastewater, make a determination if there's sewer available. But I feel very confident in saying that when that 5 million gallon facility is complete, there will be sewer available.
You're saying they're looking at building 30 residential homes or what type of homes are there?
30 single-family homes, yes, ma'am.
Off of the R10?
Off of the RS 10.
RS 10, sorry.
Yes, ma'am. So like I said, his price points are 200,000.
Okay, I've talked to a few folks, and I see a few folks are here tonight that are neighbors in the area there. And the way we want to do this is let one person speak for the group, if that's okay. Do you know which one wants to speak?
Yeah, Dr. Barber is going to speak.
Okay.
And Ms. Adder, we also have 40 names of petitions, and we have about 20 people here in this neighborhood that show up to protest this fair and not fair.
This isn't a public hearing, but we do like to hear from the neighborhood.
I do have concerns about this. I like the idea that it's residential, single-family homes. However, I don't feel like we're getting the full picture. And my big thing about this is we're coming up South Main. Look at the investor coming in. What do we want to do for the future? South Main has a bad rep right now. And a lot of that has to do with crime, whether it's through drugs or alcohol or a combination or some other stuff. How do we change that? We're going to add maybe 150 people to the area, extra traffic. We've already got a lot of starter homes in the area. Folks like Jim Moore and Harvey Combs are renovating a lot of starter homes. And we're going to add more to that area. How about a, say like a 2,000 to 3,000 square foot home that our investors coming out of Nashville could settle in instead? Eventually, the subdivision is going to extend beyond that 12 acres. But that's the future. There's been millions spent on the nursing homes, on the assisted living facilities, the YMCA, Martin Luther King Park. Eventually, in Phase 4, we're going to have a greenway going straight down through there. What kind of housing do we want these people to be seeing? I'm not for the, I'm not for additional duplexes. I like the single family. But I think they ought to be bigger. The average home, right now, it's costing about $150 a square foot to build. And that would fit in with a 1,300 square foot home. Young people. What do we have to offer the other folks? Traffic and safety. We're going to increase, the traffic on South Main's already pretty bad. It's a nice straight cut, cutting straight through off of 431, coming right through a main corridor, Main Street to downtown Springfield. That's going to be increased. But what do we want to see the folks coming down that road? What do we want to see them do? Will they be safe going down through South Main after dark? What kind of people are we bringing in? I don't feel like we have the whole story behind this. On paper, it looks great. I'll give you that. But my gut feeling tells me there's more to it than that. What is that? You know, we've got some really good people in this town that are revitalizing, revitalizing South Main, taking away that bad reputation. I'd like to see that continue without adding new problems and new complications to the area. Just let's, let's look to the future. How do we want to grow this town? My interest is basically South Main Street, but includes the whole town. Where do we want to go? Raymond, do you have anything else in this?
No, I'm fine.
All right, any questions here?
Questions from the board.
What, what size houses are you proposing to build in that area?
I'm not a builder. I've done some restoration renovations. But I think we ought to have some 2,000 to 3,000 square foot buildings for our investors that are coming to Springfield, that they would be interested in living in. And I know that doesn't fit in this plan. Yeah, we're zoned. They definitely fit in the plan. We're zoned now. But I also understand the considerations that the developers have about making a profit and being able to build and still keep, keep some type of profit there. But I think our homes are to be a 1,300 square feet as a starter home. And we've got a lot of them in that area. And duplexes are rentals. We've also got a lot of them in the area. That's not the answer to South Main. So I'm going to leave it up to the planning commission here. You are wiser in this area than I am. And I totally believe that y'all will do what is best for Springfield.
And I kind of want to make it clear of what we do. We don't actually change zoning. We recommend to the mayor and Alderman, whatever the recommendation is. And we don't also, also don't dictate what a house looks like or the size of the house is on. We just recommend the size of the lot, and that would be that RS 10. Or the R20 that's already there.
And what it may come down to is a decision whether we want duplexes or whether we want single, single homes.
David, could you bring that slide up again, please?
Please.
Of course, you got this pond back there. I thought that's set, attached to three different properties on there, three different owners. Just past Law Road on the right. Does that just pass Law Road? We're only going to have one access.
This way.
That's it? There's no other way in and out of here?
That's for our suburbs.
Yeah, it makes in the max.
Okay, are there any other questions from this group over here? Mr. Jones, if you want to come up, we may have a question or two for you. Do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Well, I'd just like to say that that is, there's nothing hidden. That's the way it's going to be. Those houses will have granite, wire trim, and affordable, $200,000. And houses are selling for like $175 a foot, not 150 right now. So whoever buys those are already going to have equity in them. And I'm just going, they'll be nice houses, you know? They'll have wrought iron rails, they'll have streetlights. It'll be a nice neighborhood. People from Nashville are not going to, they're not going to live here. People from Springfield need a portable house. Can't nobody even afford rent right now. And this project will move quick, and it'll be nice. They'll all have their own driveways, concrete driveways.
You mentioned affordable housing, and you mentioned rental. So 1,300 square feet, with the law rentals in there, 1,300 square feet that would be affordable for people in Springfield, but you'll be out lots of affordable houses.
Well, whoever buys them, I can't control if they're going to rent them out. But I'm saying, I'm selling them to people to live in. I'm not doing nothing rental. I don't want no duplexes, nothing like that. I'm selling the houses under what I could be selling them for. Whoever buys them, it's going to have equity in their house already, in a nice house, with the nice stuff that they couldn't afford, granite, wire trim, unless they got something like this.
Question, you know, sewer has is going to get to the road when they talk about getting back on sewer.
I believe it's going to have a pump, is what somebody said.
So we're going to locate on one of those lines?
That'll be a question for the engineers. I mean, I'm not real sure.
But see, I want them to have sewer that halfway in this property that falls away from the road, so it definitely can't get to the street.
Well, it'll have some kind of courseman, sewer pump somewhere on the property.
Okay, we need to reel it back in a little bit. The questions need to be from the board instead of from the audience.
Well, is that going to be restricted?
Wait, is that going to be restricted to, to thirteen hundred square feet or two hundred and five?
It's not going to be smaller than thirteen hundred feet. So thirteen hundred feet will be the starting point, you know? Some of the lots a little bigger, you know, might put a bigger, you know? It'll be probably eight or nine different house plants, you know, that we'll do in there. And they'll all have the wood on them like that, wood shutters, wood posts, wrought iron rails. You know, they'll be nice. And this back here, they're going to make that, uh, kind of community access, whole neighborhood built up. They're something fine, you know, or whatever. It'll be cleared out and it'll, it'll be nice, you know?
Okay, any other questions?
So if we keep it as R-twenty, you can build duplexes?
I could buy it right now and fill it up with duplexes. But I don't, but I'm not going to do that. I don't want to do that. I'm not buying it unless it gets RS-ten, because it's not profitable to put that road in, the development.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I got a comment.
Okay.
And I've had several phone calls about this issue. We've visited this issue before on that lot out there, piece of ground. And the way I look at it, I don't live on South Main. These people do.
Right.
I go down South Main a bunch. I go up, that's where I go when I go to four thirty-one, head to Nashville. I go down South Main because I live on the west side of town. And traffic is out there pretty rough. I mean, it's, it gets jammed up at times. And we have Sleepy Hollow, which is right there on South Main. We go pass on Sleepy Hollow a little bit. You got apartments, you got that. Then we get to, to the nursing homes, which they just added on that one. You got the YMCA property, you got Martin Luther King Park, which is a beautiful park. But my comment on the deal is that property's going to be worth more someday than thirty lots. And because that farm goes all the way to forty-nine. And I'm saying, and it's been proposed already, it's been talked about, not in a, not in this forum, but it's been talked about, open that up all the way to forty-nine and subdividing all that farm. Because I know who owns the farm. But I, I wouldn't want thirty lots of this, and nothing wrong with thirteen hundred square foot house, don't get me wrong. But at the beginning of it, right off South Main, if that property come, is, is subdivided at some point. I think we need to have bigger homes that far down South Main. Because we're backing up against the park, the nursing home's across the street and they've done an excellent job on, on their decor and how they look. And the traffic out there is, it's, it's, it can be tough at times. And it just, that's my thoughts on it. But y'all live there and I had to kind of, you know, go with y'all. Because, I mean, y'all, y'all live there, I don't. But I do go out there quite a bit and I do know the area very well. But I think, nothing against you wanting to build homes at all. But I think to put a cul-de-sac in right there would be the wrong move at this point, to me.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I think that a two hundred thousand dollar home is way above a starter home. I think they're very nice looking houses. And I also think that adding six million dollars would up the value of everybody's property sitting over out there. I didn't want Walmart built over in front of me, but it happened. And, uh, six million dollars would help Springfield out. What, what Mr. Hollins was talking about would be great, but that may be twenty years from now. I won't ever see that.
Right. Okay, any other thoughts? Any other?
David, what, what's your thought on this?
Well...
I'm not trying to put you in a...
But you are. So... But, okay, this is what I can tell you. The land use is residential. Our land use plan calls that area residential. The existing zoning classification is R-twenty. Some of the individuals in this group right here have a misconception that a bigger lot leads to a bigger house. That's not necessarily the case. You can do R-twenty's and they can still build a thousand square foot house on them. Okay? You can do, the biggest thing to keep in mind here is if we do nothing, the zoning classification allows somebody to come in, probably get fifteen or so lots at twenty thousand square feet with enough frontage that they can put duplexes on every lot and turn it into a rental village. That's the reality. As if we do nothing now, that could happen in, in the future. Okay, so now we have a request for R-seven, I mean RS-ten zoning, which is minimum of ten thousand square foot lots. Mr. Jones said thirteen hundred square foot minimum, minimum. The lots at ten thousand, we have a maximum lot coverage of all buildings of forty percent. So up to a four thousand square foot house could be built on a ten thousand square foot lot by our existing, by the, the zoning ordinance. You know, he's going to limit them to two, uh, thirteen thousand square feet. He's going to sell them at two hundred thousand dollars apiece. Uh, the value to the surrounding neighbors is, is six million dollars. It, uh, and I don't know, will that run their price, their, the value of their property up or down? I would say I'm going to fall on the upside. I don't know how much, but, you know, I had been taught, people talk to me about Sleepy Hollow. Sleepy Hollow in this subdivision are in no way comparable. Sleepy Hollow is a R-ten planned unit development. To make a very long story short, they were able to get just over six thousand square foot lots. That's not going to happen here. Maximum lot coverage, or maximum lots on any cul-de-sac, irregardless of the zoning classification, is thirty lots. Whether it's RS-twenty or R-forty. You can only get twenty or thirty lots on a cul-de-sac. You know, in contrast, before my time, Stonegate built hundreds of houses on one entrance. Stonegate subdivision is just essentially a super duper cul-de-sac. So we've changed the way that's done. It meets our land use plan. It's, ensures that there won't be duplexes on the lots if you rezone it RS-ten. That's all I can tell you for sure.
All right. Any other questions?
I'd like to say something. I respect the rights of a builder, a developer, I truly do. I also respect the rights of the people that live in that area also.
Is this a way to block or prevent duplexes from coming in? Is this a way to ensure that there could be something of value? That's, I have to understand if, if anybody's position that is in opposition here tonight has changed. Because I have to, you know, it's a situation that nobody, somebody will be happy, somebody will be unhappy. And I'm more, I'm concerned builders can build wherever they like. There's other properties, there's other opportunities. These people will have to embrace whatever is put there at whatever time. If not this time, some other time. And I think the point you make about someone could come in there and duplex situation could not be prevented. Then you're going to have a lot of unsavory situations going on. But do the people, the neighbors, the, the folks around us here, the people that are here tonight, understand that? Do they feel like their opinions have been changed? Is there a compromise here or something? Because, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, they're there. We might drive by it on occasion, but they're going to be there all the time. And I, and I'm certain that the intentions of the builders are good. And what they want to do is, is, you know, that's a nice looking home. Looks way better than what I live in. And, uh, and so, but there's, the consensus of the people that are in opposition has that changed tonight by hearing this discussion? Is what I'm concerned about. And I, yeah, I understand the, the dollars and cents of, well, we can't develop unless we can build this many homes. It's not going to work unless we get this amount of units to build. And, but it also scares me that someone can come in there and snatch this property up and then all of a sudden, there's duplexes popping out of the ground. And I think that would be the worst thing that could happen right now. But there again, you've got a petition signed by folks in opposition. You've got quite a group of people here tonight. And I'm concerned for their, you know, the recourse is that's going, what's going to be placed on them after this. Do they feel confident that this would be good after hearing this and seeing this? Is what I'm concerned about right now. And, um... Would you like a show of hands? I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to express this in a way. I don't know if I'm making sense or not about this. Because I see good on both sides of this room. I really do. And I, and I understand this is, this is business. This is, you know, the, the opportunity to take a property and build is, is what this nation's all about. But also the rights of the people around this property is also what we've got to be concerned with also. And then even no matter what we do, this still has to go before the mayor and alderman. And that could still be an issue. But if I'm a property owner there or a, in that area, I'd be, I'd be terribly scared about the situation of duplexes. I didn't realize that, that someone could go in and buy this property and all of a sudden, you know, you could start building duplexes. That, that to me would be the worst possible situation. And nothing against anybody that lives in a duplex. But, but you know, that's just going to be a merry-go-round of people coming and going in. But also, I'm, I see in developments like this, you have people that are parking out on the street. And I know you'll have concrete driveways, but you're still going to have that. You know, it's a pretty picture right now. It looks great. But the other things that can happen along as this goes along can, can muddy up the water. And I'm concerned about, you know, has anybody's opinions changed about what you've seen? Or do you understand anything differently? You know, because I have to kind of, you know, I'm, I'm... Let's just have a show of hands. Has anybody in the group that came in opposition changed your mind tonight? If you had, so raise your hand. I wonder, okay, I don't see any hands.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah?
Is it my, and I, is it my understanding that you haven't purchased this property that is contingent on this getting rezoned? Okay.
There's a question over here, Mr. Allen, if you'd like to entertain him.
Oh, okay.
I just wondered about this duplex thing that you brought up. Is this like an automatic? So if you have twenty thousand square feet, you can put a duplex on it?
Yes, ma'am. What, well, there are some, there are some requirements. But if you have a twenty thousand square foot lot in a twenty, in an R-twenty zoning, you can put... A duplex on it?
Yes.
Yes, you can put a duplex on it. It has to have a hundred and twenty feet...
Frontage.
Uh, not, a hundred and twelve and a half feet of frontage.
We do have an RS-twenty zoning, don't we, Dave?
We do, but that is not this.
But that's not zoning for this property.
So...
This zoning is not RS-twenty?
No, ma'am. This is R-twenty. So, a, a surveyor worth his, I, I just did some quick numbers. Approximately twenty percent of the, the property would come out in, in roads and storm drainage detention. So that'd leave eighty percent. Twenty thousand square foot lots, that'd give twenty lots. A surveyor that knows what he or she is doing by our sub-rigs could design a twelve hundred square, twelve hundred foot long cul-de-sac. Twenty lots with more than adequate, you know, because that's all you can do. And our maximum mods on a cul-de-sac is thirty. So chances are real good that they could make every one of those lots duplex available.
Twenty.
Twenty of them. So that would be twenty duplexes or forty dwelling units. Now, I'm not saying that will happen. I'm just saying that it's a, it's a possibility. Hold on, hold on. He's the guy you asked.
That's a good question.
How long has this property, this fellow's had this property? Nine, ten, eleven years and he's never thought about putting duplex on it? I think we're putting up a fear that's not real.
That's one of the questions that Mike was...
I, I just asked, I said, when's the last duplex we approved in this town?
About a year ago.
One duplex, one?
No, no. It's Jim Moore subdivision out on Bats and Davis.
Okay, Jim, the two he put out there.
Mm-hmm.
And we, people are not, in my view, you look around, people are not flogging Springfield to spend that kind of money on duplex and turning it a rental property. But on y'all's situation, being it is zoned like it is, are y'all willing to roll the dice that, that don't have, okay? That's, that's what I mean. Everybody in here is a pro.
We're for the improvement of Springfield. We were there before all these Section Eight buildings and we were there first. Y'all moved them out there. We're still there. We want to see Springfield grow and be beautiful, like it says in the Chamber of Commerce book. And we're begging people from Nashville to come up here. That road is the truckport of everybody that comes off I-24 in Springfield and sees it for the first time. And I think we want something out there that we can all be proud of and the people see and we can grow like we expect to grow and have more than six million dollars of revenue, have hundreds of millions of dollars of revenue and have a great town and we live in Florida.
Okay.
You plan on doing this all at once, Clay, or you're going to do half of it at one time or?
I want to, I'll get all the infrastructure done one time and then I'll probably, I'll start probably ten houses at a time.
But go ahead and cut the roads all the way in and the cul-de-sac and, and everything?
Okay, Bud's got a question too. RS-15 is out of the question?
Yes, I already started. I'm trying to do them affordable and it's hard to do, you know? And I know you, like, think if I put a bigger house, then I could make the same money which you can't, you know? It's just, it's just a part. And I'm going to make less money if I put nice stuff in these houses, but I'm fine with that. It's going to be a nice neighborhood.
You know, we've had this conversation before about infrastructure. The difference in the lots' frontage is sixty-two feet. These lots can have seventy-five foot lot frontage, R-twenty duplex ready would have a hundred and twelve and a half foot. Okay? That sixty foot of difference makes or breaks a developer now when it comes to put in sanitary sewer, water, roads, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and underground utilities. Because the price of land has gone up. Because the price of land has gone up. Where years ago, where the price of land was low, we could, so, the costs have gone up, price of land has gone up. Mr. Jones has run the numbers. He's gotta have thirty lots to make that work. That's gonna, that, and that's not gonna change whether Mr. Jones gets the rezoning or not. Thirty lots is what's gonna have to work out there, or thirty dwelling units or more. So, there's one way I can get more than thirty dwelling units out there, and it's as it sits right now. There's one way that I can get thirty and only thirty single-family residential units on individual lots, and that's what Mr. Jones has proposed. It's a lesser of two evils. Both meet the land use plan. And, you know, Mr. Borger brought up increase in traffic. You've heard my statement before about increased traffic. People think that the speeds remain the same, but they don't. The more traffic you have on a road, the slower the traffic goes. And, and if you doubt me, let's you and I go over to Trinity Lane tomorrow morning at seven-thirty and see if we're on fifty-five miles an hour. No, I'm just saying, ma'am. Well, all I'm saying is, is that more traffic...
Okay, we need to reel it back in a little here, Dave.
So, it's up to you. Let me get this back on track. It is up to you. You are the planning commission. Y'all make the motion. We will take it as recommended or not recommended to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and they will make the final decision as always.
Hey, but what, you mentioned if we don't do this, we run the risk of somebody coming in and doing what with the property?
The, as it's zoned right now, somebody can come in and subdivide that into approximately twenty lots. If they do it correctly, every one of those lots would be duplex available, and they could build duplexes on those lots, meaning two dwelling units. Now, does that, are duplexes always rentals? No. Duplexes could be condominiums. But there could be up to approximately forty dwelling units on that property. So, it's either, right now, the, like, Mr. Hollinsworth said, the properties...
The houses that's out there now, past where we're talking about, I think it's called Country Place, is that what it is? It's right beside Country Place, those houses.
Apartments.
Well, not the...
You're talking about the townhomes?
Yes, he's talking about townhomes.
He's talking about landrooms.
Landroom quarter. Believe it or not, those are set up as condominiums. They're individually lauded, they can be sold as a condominium. That was the original proposal by the original developer.
That's what I was getting back to, because it's rental property, and I think Mr. Jones had said that he's gonna build, what, ten units at a time?
Yes, ma'am.
And if that didn't come into, if it wasn't bought off, then you would have to, what, sell off to someone else? Or how would that work? Could they become rental property somewhere along the line?
No, ma'am, I will never have a rental property. Somebody's gonna buy it or... These portable houses like this, look like that, and they're gonna sell people.
You mentioned, if we don't do this, somebody can come in and do something else with duplexes, but don't we have a say in to say that we don't want that?
No, we don't. The zoning ordinance says what the zoning ordinance says. You can do R-20 lots, twenty thousand square foot minimum lots. The ordinance says that in an R-20 zoning classification, they have to have a hundred and twelve and a half feet on the front, road frontage. So, there may be a discrepancy on the size of the lots, it may be ten lots that they could only do. I just read some quick numbers. I don't have my zoning ordinance right in front of me. I don't know exactly if it's twenty thousand square feet per dwelling unit. If that's the case, they'd have to have a forty thousand square foot lot. I just don't know. I don't have the answers in front of me. All I can say is, there is a possibility of duplexes as it is right now.
And to answer your question, Mr. Townsend, the only thing that you would see would be the subdivision plat, when it came to us to present to you in the R-20 zoning. That's the only thing that you would see.
So, it's in your, you guys' capable hands. I do not envy your position at all.
All right.
Now, I would, I would like to remind the commission, only motions in a positive fashion can be made. So, the motion will have to be to rezone the property RS-10.
Unless there was no motion made at all, then...
Unless there's no motion made at all. And then, I guess I'll have to do an ordinance that says the planning commission has no recommendation on this rezoning. But I would like to remind you, it is your place to make a recommendation.
Okay.
Well, with that in mind, is there a positive motion with, from the group?
I would like to make the motion to rezone it to R-10. I think that's the best-case scenario. That's what staff recommends to us.
RS.
RS.
RS-10, and, you know, it, you go with twenty thousand lots and try to build a three hundred square foot, thousand dollar house out there, they're hard to sell, and you overbuild the neighborhood, so I think it, I feel like that's the best scenario for this piece of property.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, we have a second. We are ready to vote.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
No.
Ms. Woodard?
No.
Ms. Boyd?
No.
Mr. Townsend?
No.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
And no.
Two to six, it fails.
Motion fails. Thank you, and thank you. I'm glad that the, the, the... System has worked.
You can leave if you'd like now.
Now, I do want you to be aware, well, the second one, that this will go as an ordinance to rezone without a recommendation from the planning commission. So, it still goes. So, the first reading, no public hearing. Second reading, there will be a public hearing.
And the second reading will be when, David?
January.
January, the third, yeah.
Yeah, January. No, December.
December. It'll be December.
That's what happened at the November nineteenth, December.
There will be a first reading at this November meeting, there will be a second reading at the December meeting, and the December meeting is the third Thursday.
December seventeenth.
December seventeenth.
We don't need to be here until nineteen.
No.
No, you won't be able to be here in December.
Yes, yes. We, thank y'all for coming out.
All right, we do have one other item, the add-on request from Brown's Glade subdivision that's a Dollar General site. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion? We have two votes.
Stop, just stop, I can't hear.
Let's take a moment while...
Yes, I could not hear anything from any of y'all.
Okay, we had a motion and a second to put this on the floor.
Motion from Buzzie.
Buzzie.
I'm gonna take the second here. This...
All in favor of putting this on the floor for discussion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Samantha, would y'all close those doors, please? Okay, you ready for me?
Ready for you, Dave.
Okay, this is a Brown Glade subdivision, Dollar General, well, Turner Development bought this, and they're gonna put, they're putting a Dollar General on this lot. This is a two-lot subdivision. Normally, in a two-lot subdivision, you guys never see it. What's different in this one is, is that they're actually gonna build a road here with a temporary cul-de-sac. They're gonna bring water in. There's existing sewer already here. There's five point four, five acres here that they will subdivide at some other time. It's on commercial, by the way, so it'll be a commercial subdivision. So, what we asked tonight is conditional approval of this final plat, because the construction plans have not been approved, to our knowledge, from the state of Tennessee, and they have not given us a bonding amount to approve yet. So, we'll have to bring you guys back a bonding amount for approval and take that to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. So, hopefully, we'll have it and be able to conduct that business at the December planning commission meeting.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything, just...
Well, no, you need to do a conditional approval. They ask for a conditional approval. Actually, they ask for approval, but I don't think they realize we can't approve it until we actually have the bond in hand, or they agree to do the construction of the infrastructure. They wanna go ahead and register the plat. I, I, I...
Which Dollar General is that? Where's that located?
Corbin Road, Cortland Road is right here. Right there's Cortland, Cortland Road. So, it's, you know, we, they've been moving some dirt out there already, if you go that way.
I saw that, yeah.
About two doors up from Dr. Woods' veterinary facility.
Yeah, I saw, I saw they were moving dirt.
They're moving a bunch of dirt. How many dollar stores will that make us?
It's a lot.
Number one town.
Maybe six.
Maybe we'll get their corporate headquarters before, so.
It's right there, I'm looking at it right now.
I mean, you know, their model is a walking model. So, they look at, a walking distance is not so much a driving distance, except in the more rural areas, they have a, but it's still a small radius compared to other.
Is it on the floor?
It's on the floor.
For discussion. For discussion.
We don't have a motion for a conditional approval.
You got one now. You got a motion for conditional approval.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I think if there's no other discussion, we're ready to vote.
Yeah. Just go ahead. Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero conditional approval.
We have no BZA meeting this month. There's no business to consider. Monday is Veterans Day, the city will be closed, and Happy Thanksgiving just around the corner. So, we will continue to get our, get things together and bring you a, an agenda next month. We will, you know, get a look at site plans that we've approved in-house. We'll just let you know, we'll give you a yearly roundup since Ju, January, of what we've approved in-house subdivisions that, you know, because there's a lot of two-lot subdivisions you guys never see.
Well, we are so proud to see a level lot at the Second Amendment site.
Well, we were, we were fortunate, gentleman has purchased that. The remaining structure is still part of that site as well, so it will, isn't it? No, maybe. I'll have to look and see.
Okay, do we have anything else? Have we had enough?
Most of it, yeah.
Bill of yours.
Thank you. Y'all have a good, Happy Thanksgiving.